We have to have an independent auditor to audit, our financial audit every year. And so Mr. Brewer signed a contract to do that with us and he's completed audit. He has his presentation per what kind of general statutes he has to do. And so, Mr. Brewer.
Think it's also important to know Mr. Brewer is a big bluegrass fan. So we have that in common.
Absolutely. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been so good to be here in the one sound of Summerfield. First thing I want to do is thank the mayor and board for allowing me to be their auditor this year. And want to remind you that I work for you guys. Okay? A little bit of my background, I worked for Eddie Carrick for about eighteen years. Doing specializing in auditing not-for-profits, municipalities, power companies, things of that nature. I got kicked out of the mess here a couple of years ago. He's ten years older than me, but now I have to be the boss man. But in any case, I've got about twenty-five municipalities. And I'll specialize in populations less than five thousand. So I'm uniquely equipped to understand the needs of small municipalities, okay? And I see the same problems everywhere I go, the same, mostly the same things happen. But when you're small, you have, you know, smaller budgets, smaller staff, less expertise. So we understand, stand those things, okay? So that being said, I'd just like to invite you, if you think you have any questions, concerns, my doors are always open. There can be a call. A few months ago, I got a phone call and, well, actually the day before, I was actually talking to my computer. Brewer was talking about things and talking about Summerfield. And I really didn't even know what was going on. And the next day, my phone rang and it was Summerfield. I said, oh, you know. So anyways, I looked at the, I mean, so I asked, talked on a while on the phone. And they seemed to really understand government accounting and what was going on. So I was curious, so I requested a copy of the audit in the last couple of years. And I took a general measure and I put that thing for a couple, three days. And I said, you know what? This thing is all down. Man, this thing looks good. So I wasn't scared of it. I was thinking about anything in the things. I said, hey, I think I'm. So anyway, it was good for pleasure, okay? Very helpful. Looks really good, really clean in my guy. Okay? So that's a little two lectures. And my presentation is two-fold, okay? First part of it is about the numbers. And I believe I handed out, everybody's got a guide. And this guide right here should be back in there. One, three, five starts with colorful part. Now that colorful part, that's the second part. That's the required part that I have to do, okay? So two parts, going over the numbers. After that, going over the required parts, going through indicators, okay?
Is it, can we follow it in the regular printout here? Or is that separate?
It's not in the packet. It was not in the packet.
Okay? So, so the audit time, before you start, on page one, you'll find the fee. And found the Summerfield receipt that is unqualified or a clean fee. And what that means is that the files before you, they fairly represent books and records of the town as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, based on our audit receipt. And right after these opinions, starting on page four through twelve, is a section that's called enhancement discussion analysis section. And this section is written in more language terms. It talks about where the town is, a little bit about where it's been, and even a little bit about where it's going. Now, this is a good time to remind you that your audit is a public document. Any of your constituents could come in and request a copy. And because the M D N A is written in more language terms, that's always a good place to point them to the store, okay? And right after the M D N A comes the exhibits, which is very technical, governmental accounting, full accrual, first two exhibits, modified accrual. The last exhibit starting in three, four, or five. Right after the exhibits is the notes. And after the notes starts the schedules, okay? So the schedules, that is the part. The exhibits is really the technical audit. The schedules in the back, that tells you the story, the detail behind the exhibits. So that's why I'll go over the financial highlights, starting on page thirty-eight, the general fund. Or you can see it right here at the top of your guide, okay? So the first thing you notice in the add-on tax collections showed an increase of about fourteen thousand dollars. Next, we see that low ops and sales tax was up about twenty-six hundred. Other taxes such as franchise tax, ABC distribution beer and wine, the solid waste was up about seventy thousand. Grants was down about two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Investment earnings, they were up about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. And I wanted to point that out because for years and years and years, I never got to say anything about investment earnings, okay? So the town of Summerfield investment earnings increased a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in one year, which is one. So I would encourage everybody to take advantage of those interest rates while they're high, okay? So you guys probably had a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's one. I want to point that out. And next we see that miscellaneous revenues, they were up about a hundred sixty-five thousand. For a total, total revenues were up about two hundred nine thousand. As for the expenditures, expenditures were also up about one point three million, mainly due to increases in salaries in the general government, planning and zoning, and cultural and recreation departments, as well as increases in capital outlaying in the general government, cultural rhetoric, and community services and community departments. For the year, revenues were less than expenditures in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand versus a profit of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand in two thousand twenty-three. And I'd like to point out, two thousand twenty-three is the year that you got six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars worth of COVID money, okay? So it kind of skewed that two thousand twenty-three number, because of that great big COVID money bridge, okay? Another point of interest is unsigned fund balance. It calculates to be a hundred ninety-five percent of current year's expenditures, and that's compared to four ninety in two thousand twenty-three. Another highlight is your collection rate is well above state average at ninety-nine point seven-two. Now, that says a lot about your constituents having paid the property tax, because ninety-nine point seven-two is very indicative of everybody else. That's great. And it really, it's very important because you guys are, when it comes to budget time, you know, you only want to start with revenues. You've got to start with revenues or you'll have trouble. Start with revenues and have a collection rate of ninety-nine point seven-two gives you a good, confident foundation to start on the budget process, okay? So I wanted to point that part. So that's a thirty thousand, thirty of some highlights will be slightly interesting. So if anybody has a question, I'd like to try to answer, answer those questions. This is, this is, this is up to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is about eight months old. No questions? No questions? I'd like for you to take your little hat out there and turn to the colorful part. And that's where I'm going to start the second part, okay? Now, as you may recall, L G C will no longer be issuing unit letters, okay? This is our fourth year. And it used to be forever and ever, when we got done with the audit, the city L G C, then you run it through with all kinds of analysis and informants. And if they had a, if they seen a problem, if they seen a concern, they would send a, a letter to the. Sorry. They would send a letter to the, to the unit, asking for their reply or their plan of action, okay? Now, for years and years, L G C always complained that when they had a municipality that got in financial trouble, and L G C had to get to a point where they came to town, then they, they were always upset, that they always heard the same story. The boards didn't, but that was always their complaint forever, that's all. The boards, we go there and the boards say, of course, I've heard that. So about four years ago, they came up with this, okay? It's really been working out good. It's more work on me, but it's really helped our boards understand. Now, L G C will no longer be issuing unit letters. Therefore, the auditors are now required to report to the governing body financial performance indicators. And to notify the governing body of their requirement to submit a response to L G C if there are financial performance indicators of concern. Or if the audit financial statements include one or board deficiencies or other findings, okay? So now, they basically took the excuse from the boards. It's very, very important that boards understand where you're at financially about your numbers, but also about operational, because really an audit's about, so it's been claimed it's all about numbers, but it's not. It's also about operational things, okay? So, and boards are always coming to build, you always have some new people. So it's important that we do this every single year and give boards some, some help on understanding what is a performance indicator and what is a concern, all right? So it's been working out pretty good. So the governing body is required to develop a response to the auditor's findings. This response must be signed by a majority of the members of the governing body and be submitted to L G C within sixty days of the auditor's presentation, addressing each deficiency or other audit finding, and the body planning to address each indicator of concern, all right? In language terms, you've got sixty days from the day to address anything that's a concern, okay? It's called F P I C, F P I C. So sixty days from the day, all right? So let's go over the indicators. Starting on page one, colorful right here, I want you to understand that anything that's, that's red is an indicator of concern. And when I say red, I'm not talking about this graph right here. I'm talking about right in the middle, okay? It's an indicator of concern. So, starting on page two, you'll notice the first section, and that relates to the minimum unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. That's that graph up there at the top. For a unit with a general fund expenditures the size of Summerfield, thirty-four percent is the minimum. And the average for a unit, Summerfield's size, is sixty-three percent. I want you to notice that Summerfield is at two fifty-five point seven-three, okay? Forever, always got to ask a question about that percentage. Say, well, is that good? Are we good? How do we stand? Well, is that good? I'm supposed to have that measure? Well, we never have standard. Now, it's a standard that shows us what is a concern, and that's thirty-four percent or below. What's average for others, your size, sixty-three. And what you guys stand at, two fifty-five point seven-three. So what does that mean? That means if Summerfield continue to spend at the same rate that you spent in two thousand twenty-four, is it not collect and scent? You can stay open for two and a half years before you run out of money, unrestricted. That's what that means, okay? Now, for, you know, a lot of people hang their hat on that percentage, and that is not the only thing that demonstrates your health, okay? Because that number is very elastic. It's very fickle. It goes up and down real quick, you know what you're doing that year. I see small municipalities all the time, save up their money, save up their money, and they got a big road project going on. So they spend five hundred thousand dollars on their roads in one year. And they went from a four hundred and fifty percent to ninety-eight percent. And they go, oh, no, we got a terrible year. Well, that's because, the way you figure that is, there's a number in the, in the top and a number in the bottom as the expenditure. So it's going to kill your percentage that number of year. And they say, we had a terrible year. I said, no, you didn't. You got all the way through those. Well, and then the very next year, when they get to regular spending, regular spending, their percentage shoots up. So don't hang your hat on that one percentage. Best thing to do is if you got a big expenditure coming up, you know, you save for it, plan for it, spend it. Your percentage is going to go down, it's going to bump up again, okay? So don't hang your hat on that. That is an indicator of concern, if you follow the thirty-four percent, all right? Now, starting on page four, you can go ahead with page three. It doesn't apply to you, starting on number nine, it talks about electric. Page four, starting with number twelve. This, this section, starting with twelve, is the general performance indicators, okay? Like I said, all of this is more than just numbers. It's also about operational things like, are you making your budget correctly? Is it illegal language? Did you bust your budget? Did your finance officer bonded correcting? Things of that nature. In other words, things operationally, they don't have nothing to do with debt or credit, all right? And this is a section starting on page four, number twelve. Now, I want to draw your attention to number fourteen. Correct, number sixteen. I have a glass of wine over this. Number sixteen, there's an indicator of concern there. It says, this indicator identifies whether the unit has any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or, or management letter comments. The following are the auditor's management comments that need to be addressed to the sixty days, okay? There's two sections that need to be answered, all right? And I believe you will, you'll see that you've already got the answers to those, okay? Number one, during the year, the original primary operating bank accounts reconciliations could not be located. Therefore, it could not be determined if the monthly reconciliation, reconciliation was timed. Subsequently, all the bank reconciliations were completed and accurately prepared. And even subsequent to that, which was just last month, it brought to my attention that those regional bank reconciliations were found. And I did inspect them, and they were done timed, okay? So that's part of my procedures is not only do I look to see if they're correct, I look to see the date and if they're timed. The very first, the originals, at the time, could not be found, so I couldn't determine it. So I just had to put a comment saying, I couldn't determine it, okay? So that's already been answered. That, that indicator has to be answered within sixty days of the date, okay? It's already been answered, already been taken care of. Number two, prior to the current audit year, the town's fixed asset schedule had not been properly maintained. Prior additions and disposals were not recorded or appreciated in accordance with policy. Subsequently, the town has revised and updated its fixed asset schedule to properly reflect the town's capital asset purchases. The town has implemented a suitable system to document and record capital assets going forward, okay? So during my audit of the numbers and of the operational things, I found that the fixed assets mechanism you had to figure the, to keep track of fixed assets, additions and disposals, were wrong, were really a mess. You know, I believe the prior auditor had the same issue and done a adjusting entry, or done a prior period adjustment to try to reconcile back that, unfortunately, I believe that should have been done on a full accrual basis. So this year, the whole appreciation schedule was revamped and actually put in a format of appreciation schedule. So it is about as solid as I can, I can say, okay? So those were the only two indicators of concern for the town of Summerfield for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So based on what you just said, you now have a policy with rules and regulations to follow so that these fixed assets are maintained properly and?
When you say maintain, say it.
Well, you're, you're saying that.
Recorded, or you say it?
I mean, you said fixed assets were not maintained according to policy. That's what you said, so.
Fixed assets, fixed assets schedule had not been properly maintained. Fixed assets schedule, not the fixed assets itself, okay?
Scheduling. And now we have a policy, so going forward, we can do this correctly?
Well, when you say policy, it's not really a policy.
Or do we have rules or regulations?
In other words, it's actually a appreciation schedule.
Okay.
Instead of, I don't know really what it was before. I mean, I don't have a name for it. I mean, I know it was an Excel, but.
Right.
It's not what I'm seeing or everything before. But now, you know, it's.
How far, how far? How far back do you have to go to fix that to get it right for today?
There's not a, there's not that you can go and say, the town, you, you really have to. It's not that you're saying things started going awry on the X date. It's, it's not that.
It's kind of just human nature.
Well, it's the whole, well, yes, the whole way it was kept up with, things coming in and going out. And it's really, well, I see a lot of these things, a lot. And the best accounting method is the accounting method that you use, that you understand, okay? And when I come in, I try to, as long as it doesn't go against generally accepted accounting principles, pardon me, to credits, to damages, you know? So I try to mold to their, the way they keep it. Different bookkeepers keep up with things different, right? And sometimes, they, they understand it perfectly, so they got to train me in what I'm doing. So I sort of mold them, as long as they're keeping up. And, you know, when I came in, you know, whoever's been keeping up with it for years and years may have understood it perfectly.
Right.
But there was no one to ask. So I'm looking at it going, I don't know what's happening here. I need somebody to, you see what I'm saying? So it's sort of like driving my stick shift car. I can drive better than anybody else. Somebody else gets it in my way. I don't understand his clothes, but I think the car's fault. It's just that, you know, I didn't have anybody to. But now, it is more of a standard, uniform appreciation schedule that everybody agrees that's in the industry. Yes, this is an appreciation schedule, okay? And here's a good thing about that, all right? Anytime you're dealing with fixed assets, anything long-term assets, long-term liabilities, that is a G A S B thirty-four entry. That has to do with schedule one and two. I know I lost you right there. Let me tell you this. When you guys budget, you guys budget on a modified accrual basis, okay? When you budget, you're going to buy something. You're going to buy a car. You budget for that car, right? Fifty thousand dollar car, that's what you budget for. That's a modified cash basis. So that's all you care about. Did I spend the right amount? Did I budget for it? Things of that nature. That's exhibit three, four, five. Exhibit two and one are required by G A S B thirty-four, which shows it on a full accrual basis. So on a full accrual basis, when you buy a fifty thousand dollar car, that's not the expense. It's not. You take that fifty thousand dollar car and you put it up in a balance sheet as an asset, then you depreciate it over five years. So your expense is now the depreciation. In short, exhibit one and two has nothing to do with the way you budget. Nothing. That's there just to show people on a long-term basis, a long-term basis, what you would look like if you wasn't a missed out. All you really care about budget wise is three, four, or five, okay? So anytime you have to fix something long-term, long-term, has that long-term debt, it only affects exhibits one and two. It doesn't affect your fund balance. Your fund balance is what you're interested in. How much do we have in the general fund? You're not interested in net assets. If you look at exhibit one, it's called net assets. Exhibit two is called net assets. That's a full accrual term. When you look at exhibit three, four, or five, you're talking about fund balance and the, the schedules in the back, the fund balance. I'm not saying G A S B thirty-four isn't needed. I'm just saying it's hardly exciting. And it doesn't matter that. It doesn't matter to you how much your place has been appreciated. It don't. What matters to you is how much it costs. So that should be your, that's the prior period adjustment that had been made to fix the fixed assets, and fix the, fix the fixed asset schedule going forward. So it doesn't affect the fund balance. It definitely doesn't affect cash, okay? So in review, council has sixty days from the day to have an F P I C, which is fine indicator of concern explanation for two items, okay? So, Mr. Collins, you just, when they're ready, I'll, I'll help you. I'll show you some resources on the website that provide up something that you got to decide and get that sent in. L G C already knows, they already know that, so you've got to get it. Okay? So that's my, end my presentation, sorry I took so long, but we might have a quick one.
Yeah, I have a question. So on page twelve in the blue book, we got a thing down in the packet as well.
Page number?
Twelve. Yeah, so in here, it says something about an increase in tax.
I think, I think we all got together.
Yeah, as soon as you said page twelve, I knew it was there. That is, that's a boilerplate thing that L G C wants put in there, that the readers will understand. What will one cent do? So if you read this, it says, it says, as the town considers future revenue sources, it has determined that a one-cent increase in the property tax rate will result in additional revenue of approximately twenty thousand nineteen at current values and flex rates, okay? It's not saying that you're going to go up, because L G C has so many questions all the time that people out in the audience, the readers, they would say, well, what would one penny do? If we went up one penny, what would it do for us? So that's put in there to give the. So that's put in there to give the readers an opportunity to see what effect a penny would have. And I've had some municipalities say, "You need to take it out, take it out of there, because that's what's going up." But it doesn't read that. It doesn't read that, it's there. What it's saying is, y'all have determined that if you did go up, up or down one cent, you'd either make twenty thousand, make ten dollars, or lose. Okay? So that gives boards some understanding of the context, is when you're talking about, you know, what will a cent do, or a half a cent do if I buy some, right? And you can look right there, perhaps, of course, I might even recalculate that, because it depends on your evaluation and your collection rate. So that's answer that.
That number is not static.
No.
So next year, it could go up, it could go down.
Right. And I can tell you how to, look on page forty-one, I'll show you how to figure that. Forty-one, you got it? I take two hundred and seven million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, multiply times point zero, 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 one, and then multiply that times point nine, nine, seven, two, and you'll come up with that answer.
Well, zero, 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 one times-
Three, zero, is in front of the one. Times point nine, nine, seven, two, which is one penny on your valuation, multiplied times your collection rate at nine, nine, point seventy percent. And I bet you'll come up with twenty thousand, I want to. That's how you figure it. Would you, please, I'm surprised, but I'll figure it out. But that's, but that's your question.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, I'd be glad to take that out, but it's really-
No, that's why I just wanted to know where it came from.
Well, the shores, we all read our packet in detail, because we all don't like that sentence.
So on page fifteen, can I get more?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if prepaid expenses are ever assets.
Okay. Insurance, for example.
Okay.
In other words, insurance term might be made through the next April.
Okay.
And you pay that early and the year hasn't started, and that's prepaid.
Okay. Another question's on page, under fund balance, it says grant funds.
What's-
Same page fifteen, go down to fund balance.
Unearned grant revenues?
Grant funds, under restricted.
Oh, grant funds, that one seventy-nine hundred, if you look on up to where it says unearned grants, one seventy-nine hundred, that's the same part. That's the same. In other words, you've got, you've got some grants, I can't remember exactly the name of the grant, it's one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Right, but that's not all the grants we have.
Right, right, just that particular, whatever that grant was for. For example, say you get a grant, um-
That's just the ones that we've spent?
No, it's, it's, you haven't recognized revenue yet.
Okay.
Because the intention of the grant has not been met.
Okay, what I'm driving at is, we have four, I think four, it might be five, grants for Bandera.
Okay, yep, of course.
But we haven't had revenue to pay those out yet, so I don't understand why they're not in there as well.
Well, Brent is not, are you talking, are you asking a question about whether it's unearned or whether it's restricted?
Well, I don't know, nothing, I'm sorry.
Restricted, anything that's restricted, it's gotta be restricted by a third party. In other words, board, you cannot restrict anything. You can only assign, you can only assign something. Or there's another one, let's just say assign, if you look at that, that's a question.
So you're saying because it's assigned to Bandera, then it would go, it would be restricted?
No, no. Okay. When it says restricted, it has to be by a third party, that somebody who is giving you money says, "You have to use this only fire truck."
I got you.
Period. You can't use it for anything else, it's restricted by a third party. And let's say you haven't got the fire, the fire truck's not ready yet, right, example, it's not ready yet. So you can't count that as revenue, because it hasn't, the situation hasn't happened yet. I see a lot with, you're having the Founder's Day parade-
Right.
-or Founder's Day. So if you collect a whole lot of money, you collect five thousand dollars for Founder's Day, but it don't happen until next week.
Right.
Well, that twenty, that five thousand dollars is unearned, and it's set there as a liability, because it's a credit. Revenue's a credit too, but it can't turn into a credit until next week happens, and it moves from unearned to now, you recognize that?
Well, then why, why are those rates not in the unearned revenue?
It is.
It's a hundred and seventy thousand?
One seventy-nine hundred.
We ignore that.
That section, that section of the bottom is the fund balance, and what it's doing is, it's taking, your total fund balance, which is assets minus liabilities minus the flow, the current inflows, and if you do that calculation, it's gonna come up to seven million, six, twenty-four, eight, sixty-one. And it's taking that seven million, six, twenty-four, and it's breaking it down into different components. This much of it's restricted for this, this much is grants, this much is budget, this much is assigned, and it looks a whole lot better than if it just said seven point six million. So that's what it is.
We have-
It's showing you a link.
But it's not showing up in here, because we have, we have-
Millions.
Millions in grants.
So what you're saying is we have millions of, three, five million, at least, six, six, read them out there, at least six million dollars in grants that we are working-
I'm not saying that at all.
I'm just asking, where is, where's the grant money?
We have-
That's a statement, kind of in the now here.
No, they can give it to us.
Okay.
Right. If it has, if it has, it would be up in, see where it says restricted cash?
No, no.
The ARCA funds, ARCA funds became, became earned the day that y'all recognized it as being, as being revenue replacement.
Okay.
Automatically went from unearned to earned, went from restricted to unrestricted.
Okay.
That was again from, that's one of the grants. But if you did have, if you did receive grants, cash, that hasn't been spent, it could be under either cash investments unrestricted, or restricted cash investments, depending on the third party restrictions, if it is, no cash investment. So what you're asking for, will we be having a unspent grant process?
Next question, then?
Okay, you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
This, this governmental accounting is, it is special. It's hard to understand, but you guys are more advanced than the rest of Americans. But you, I mean, you're more advanced than guys who actually read the ground floor. It's such a refreshing, it's all, yes, come on in.
Okay, so, all right, one more question, I'm trying to figure out how to explain this. So we have a finance committee.
Yeah.
And it says that you can do things, invest this money, you're talking about making interest and stuff like that. If we could ask them to see, how can we do this, that our, our limit, like, try to make it easy, if we did a C D, it could be no longer than five years, because we gotta be able to get that money back within a set period of time. But if they could be creative and find other ways to increase our fund balance, then as long as we stick with them that five, five-year-
Well, you got, anytime you're, you're saying things like being creative and stuff, you got-
We can be creative.
Right, there you go. In other words, for municipality, you can't, municipality is not like, you know, you have, you got laws, rules, when you're handling taxpayer money.
Right.
You can't go invest in Bitcoin and be a day trader.
Right, right, I understand.
But L G C, on their website, tells you things that you can and cannot do, and it's also written in your audit, about your cash, talking about the investments that's allowed. I know, what's the name of the investment for, the L G C promotes with the-
Capital Management Trust.
Capital Management Trust, you know, they got a bad rap here about, seven, eight, ten years ago, a lot of people pulled out of them because their bad return in the last four or five years, they've really come back good, and I've seen some really good rate of returns for Capital Management Trust, they've done a great job. If you're interested in them, they'd be glad to come down and talk to you, but I've seen some phenomenal investment earnings, and with the cash that you guys have, you know, part of, part of the financial, the job of the finance officer is to seek out, is to increase your cash through smart investing and getting, that is part of the job, to be, to drive the structure. So I think that, you know, two thousand twenty-four, you had an increase of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is increasing to, y'all made three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It was, in two thousand twenty-three, it was a hundred and seventy-three thousand, which was excellent, but you went from making a hundred and seventy-three thousand to making three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in one year, and didn't do that thing. But open the mail, and reconcile, thank you. That's phenomenal, that's great, I mean, that's wonderful. I, I like the way you done that.
Okay, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am. I'm getting excited, actually. But, hey, accounts, we're not boring people, we get excited about, excited about board affairs.
You're boring.
Okay, all right, you said the prior auditor tried to adjust the whole, I think, I don't know if it was application, I don't, it was when you were talking about item number sixteen, and we have like sixty days to get it back, and it was like number two.
Mm-hmm.
And you said the prior auditor tried to make adjustments to the schedule and revise it. Is that a normal thing for auditor, for Stokesville auditor, for Charlotte auditor, for Summerfield, is that a normal thing that's done?
Well, we're, we're required to get sufficient audit evidence. Okay? An appropriate audit evidence. If, if I come to a place where I'm like, you know what, I can't figure it out, the town can't figure it out, and that's what I run into a lot with small municipalities who don't have the expertise, they're not CPAs, and they haven't been, most of the time, they're just bookkeepers that do the best job they can, they don't understand accounting, and they mess things up, so that when I come in and try to fix it, I really can only fix it the best that's reasonable, that I can come up with, that I feel like, yes, this is appropriate, and it's sufficient, and I've got confidence in it. If I don't get that way, then I've got to give you a qualified opinion or walk away from the audit. Does that make sense? In other words, if I, if I pick up somebody's financials, and I cannot prove a material number, sometimes I can work it down to where the difference is just immaterial, and I say, it's immaterial, I've got, it's not exact, but it's immaterial, that I'm fine. But if it's material, and I can't resolve the issue, I've got to give you a qualified opinion or walk away from the audit. All right? And that's not going to be good for anything. So what we done with the, you know, I knew there's certain things that I know for a fact with fixed assets, and other things, you know, I know, fixing things up and, you know, getting things back in line and getting things convinced down, I feel like what I have is materially correct. And it's important that I say that. I feel it's materially correct, based on my art procedures and my expertise.
What's the name?
It's the best, it's the best, best I know to do.
You're saying how you left it is the best you know how to do?
Absolutely.
How, how you left it?
Right. In other words, it's, in Exhibit One and Two-
What to do with-
I, I believe that your net book value of your fixed assets, as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, is sixteen, six hundred, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two, if that's a concern. I mean, that's a material number. The question is, is that materially valid?
The question is, I don't know.
And the question is, is that materially correct? Based on our art procedures and the appreciation schedule that we've got, yes it is. But that does nothing for your fund balance, all that has to do with Exhibit One and Two, which is just getting the third quarter, we haven't done it. Come on, say it. Thank you, Mr. Brewer, any other questions?
I may have missed it, did you address the adjustment of eight hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and eighty, did I miss that?
The prior period adjustment?
Yeah.
Yes, that is. No, that's not, that's not an indicator of concern.
What was that from?
Well, it's a combination, it's a combination of last year's adjustment and this year's adjustment with capital assets. If you look on page, there's an explanation in the audit that explains, it's actually on page thirty-five, it said a prior period adjustment of eight thirty-three, seven, forty-seven, was made to net assets primarily due to capital assets not being appreciated in reported records. The net effect of this adjustment primarily resulted in a decrease in net, net capital assets.
Okay.
Okay?
So the capital assets should have been eight hundred and thirty-three thousand more.
No, no, not just then, that's primarily, that's the big chunk of it. Just look at, I'm just gonna confuse you, but-
Is it normal to have these kinds of adjustments, or for y'all to make these adjustments? Is that like a normal thing?
No. Page thirty-nine. See that prior period adjustment that was done the year before? Forty-nine, thirty-nine, five, page thirty-nine?
I'm on thirty-nine, where, oh, towards the bottom, yep, got it.
Yep, see that? Now, that was done, from what I understand, and, but it wasn't in the notes, it didn't explain in the notes last year what it was. And, you know, I was told it was to overcome the difficulties with the appreciation schedule, to get the appreciation schedule in line. My first question was, whoops, it's in the wrong place. That should only be an adjustment on Exhibit One and Two, and that's nothing to do with that. So notice this, a plus, so not only have to correct that one, we have to go that much opposite direction, plus that much more again, to get net assets where it's supposed to be. So fixed assets should only be corrected on a full accrual basis, not a modified accrual basis. So, but it doesn't affect y'all's operations at all, your operations at all. In other words, what'd you budget, how much money did you bring in, what'd you budget, how much money did you spend, that's operations. This fixed asset deal has to do with book value, appreciated value, things of that nature, that doesn't concern boards, what's- nature, that doesn't concern boards whatsoever.
So that mistake from prior, we're on the path now to getting that.
Absolutely. Yes, one, that one fatal swoop will correct that, that plus what needed to be corrected. That's a good way to say it. It fixes what needed to be corrected the first time. Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to take the time to thank, and give my condolences actually, to Ms. Ms. Luther, so I just like, I heard that, you know, she had some family pass away, Ms. Luther really worked well with me, I was really pleased with the record keeping, the hard work, I was really pleased with Mr. Baker, thank you, sir, for your help, and Mr. Robbins for not firing me on the first day. But, yeah, I was pleasantly surprised, I, I, you know, I've said, you know, this is the best board meeting I've ever been to. It really has, because every time I go in a small municipality, I get up and say, led allegiance, and it's for the people, and by the people. And I can say that this is the most, you've got the most passionate, um, citizens that participate in their government, and they care about their government. Same way with the board, you've got a hard, hard job, and the pain ain't so good. You've got a terribly hard job, you've got citizens that love the place, it breaks my heart when I go to small municipalities, and nobody cares.
That's a really good way to look at it, and.
They, when I come here.
Okay, I couldn't maybe think of it a little differently.
And even though there's some, they, some hard times, and some hard things said, and some things, that is, that, that is America, that's what makes America, America. All right? You should be proud that people care in this town. The citizens should care, and be proud that your board cares that much, because I'm telling you right now, I've been through a bunch of board meetings, and this is the best one I've ever seen. I didn't particularly like people getting their feelings hurt, but that's, that's the price of liberty, and, you know, reconciliation and grace is wonderful things. There's nothing better than grace, and there's nothing sweeter than reconciliation. And I'm proud to say, because people ask me, and they've asked me, they say, do you have summer fever? I heard a lot of comments saying, you know, people, you know, ask where I'm from, and say, summer fever, and where, well, since I've done the audit, I'm actually proud to say, and come to this meeting, I'm actually proud to say, yes, I do summer fever. This is the most American, small municipality I've been to, because these people love it so much, y'all love it so much, and people are involved in their community, they're involved, and run for office, all you need is $10,000 and arrive at the courthouse, and you can get up there and make a bit of money. And you can, but it's hard, I mean, it's hard, I mean, I say that jokingly, it's not really joking, it's hard, it's really, really hard. But if anything, you've got some healing to do, if anything, you'll come out, and I'm really pleased to see how the people will not only hold my feet to the fire, but your feet to the fire, and, you know, I feel any, any of the citizens that spoke up today are willing to do their part as citizens.
I think you gave us more than just an audit.
Yeah.
So I thank you.
And I'm just saying.
Yeah, I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
How much would you charge to come next meeting and get a 312?
I assume everybody hears that, in the beginning, we'll let you be agenda item number three.
I was hoping, I was hoping I wouldn't go mid under 25. But I did say, I did say this, I did say, listen, if I get my name in the paper, I ain't coming back. Because auditors do not want to be in the paper. You're in the paper, you're automatically missing something, guilty about something, you don't want to be in the paper. But, you know, I understand, and I know, and I want to be an asset to the town, and I think, you know, please work hard, it's not the easiest situation for anybody to come in, you guys, your poor old attorney over there. Or better. I mean, she just walked in, right? But we'll get through this, and, you know, I'll be back, if you want me back, and it's not too bad, but please don't get in the way in front of me. You don't have to quit. You don't have to quit.
Thank you.
But seriously, thank you, Mr. Rollins, thank y'all, thank for patience, thank y'all for y'all's support of the town, and I've made a new friend, and she done left, but I think Summerfield's a great town. I've had people ask me, oh, you know, Summerfield, I see now. It's a great town.
Thank you.
A great town.
Hell, it's fine.
People care, going through some changes, going through some stuff, but listen, that is why you made America. America is there. Appreciate that, y'all.
Item B, fiscal year 24, 25 budget amendments, finance officer transfer Mr. Rob.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, what you have in front of you is, this is really a formality, these are budget amendments that we've already approved, it's just things that were presented to you in prior meetings that need to be transferred efficiently, and the finance officer has prepared the amendments, most of them are pretty self-explanatory, the biggest one, like last, last meeting, y'all authorized the formation of a maintenance department, as you can see there, you authorized 198,600 from a line item of 250,000, leaving a balance of 51,400. There's also a budget amendment in there on the next page that talks about administration, personnel salaries and wages increase, that was due to having Ms. Luther on board, that was not a regular budget expense, and so we need to cover that, and that, that actual budget amendment there covers us through the rest of the year. Ms. Luther has transferred from her rate of 125 down to 75, is what I negotiated, she's now a consultant and not an employee, so we're not paying social security or fife taxes on that, and she's as needed, if Jen needs her, but Jen is starting to swim well on her own, and she's at the School of Government, by the way, in a, a course, the next couple of days. So that's a brief explanation of those budget amendments. Typically, those will be in the consent agenda that I was asked by Madam Mayor Potem to put these into regular agenda packet in case y'all have any questions about any of them, so I'll entertain any questions.
Item E, S.A. vacation sessions, staying contract.
Excuse me, I need a motion to approve all those, you have.
Oh, sorry, anyone else make a motion?
I move to approve the Dr. Fallon, one of the 24, 25 budget amendment number one as presented, and number two, the 24, 25 budget amendment number two as presented, and three, the 24, 25 budget amendment number three as presented, and number four, the 24, 25 finance officer transfer number one as presented, and five, the 24, 25 finance officer transfer number two as presented.
Have a motion, Matt, second. Have a motion, second, further discussion.